Next item is discussion item. That is the first budget amendment for 2024, 2025 with Mr. Thomas Wall.
Good evening again. I've tried to do this in five minutes, but I won't do it. So I'll just get you off of that expectation. You always got to manage expectations with the audience you're with. As part of our normal budgetary process, we do our first budget amendment at this timeframe. And actually, you'll actually approve it at the next board meeting. But this is just a discussion item, so we can have a discussion what it's all about. If you look on the screen, this is our budget calendar. So our budget process usually starts in January 4th, the next fiscal year, '25, '26. And our first step is, for our purpose, is to do our budget amendment. Because we do a budget adoption by July 1st. And when we did our budget approval back on June 3rd of last year, it was based on a lot of estimates because the state law was not passed at that time. So now that we actually have our student count, all the revenue is kind of figured out by the state how to handle it. We update our budgets and we bring it to the board for formal adoption. So this is basically our current operating program we're doing for the '24, '25 school year. Now, as in the calendar, the state has started their process for next fiscal year. So we kind of look at where we're at now, taking what the state information is going to be coming forward for the next several months. We start developing our budget for next year. But this is the part we look at for today is just the adoption of the First Amendment. You'll see on the dates that we'll be meeting again constantly talking about this. Our next big one is in April, we'll look at a first look for next year. Because we'll have a better idea what the economic factors are and where the state is going for next year's budget. But looking at this year, again, this is, I always like to lead off with this screen showing you where all the money is in the fund on a pictorial basis. We have our capital project fund, which is restricted. Our debt funds was restricted. Our special revenue funds, we have more control over it, but it's based upon the individual grants or the funding source. And then we have the general fund that kind of captures all the remaining funds in that. That's mostly our operational budget. If you have questions, feel free to interrupt me as I go along. It won't be as fast as Dr. Barlow's. I won't speak that fast. A big component, we have three big components, obviously state aid, student count, and our compensation. Those are our big things we always want to make sure we look at when we look at the operating budget. Last year, we were in June, we actually expected to increase slightly by 41 kids. That's on the blended count. Now, we have two counts, once in the fall and once in the spring, actually kind of winter more like it now. February 12th is the upcoming one. The counts are based on the calendar year. So we're looking at last February, so '24 count, and this fall's '24 count to get our true revenue for this school year. Our actual count was 385 kids less than we expected from our budgetary projection. Now, with that and the actual decrease, we add those two together. We're actually at a shortfall that I'll look at a future screen on the actual revenue. Because we get our foundation allowance of $9,921 per pupil. Just looking at the pictorial for all funds, you can see the majority of our funds, which is the yellow, comes from the state of Michigan. Since Proposal A passed in 1994, most of our money comes from the state. Prior to that, it was local elections that we would handle for our own villages. But now, majority of our money comes to the state. Recently, a lot of money has been coming from the federal side, too. Esther funds, and we're just finishing it up this year with a little bit of construction funds that ended September 30th. So that, you'll see that actually phasing down as we go forward. But if you look at our total budget, you can see our amended budget is $463 million. That's broken down here more by categories and numbers, so you can see percentages a little better. Same information from the other side, but this is just looking at the revenue side now. And you can see that for all funds, that majority of the money comes to the state on the right-hand side of the amendment of roughly 290 million. You'll see the state on the left side, we originally projected 278 million. And you ask, why is that number higher when we got less money from the state for our foundation? Is grants. State has now moved to more of a grant discussion as we talked about in the past. And you can see the federal is roughly about the same, but you'll see that going down next year as the Esther funds move out. Looking at the, just the general fund, which is our operating fund, you can see that roughly about 73% to 75% of our money is from the state. So the state does make up a large portion of that. The other portion that's big is the blue, which is local. As we, as part of our foundation allowance, even though we get $9,921 per child, we are required to levy that 18 mils on non-homestead property, which is the businesses. The total that the blue and our foundation allowance make up our full $9,921. You just realize that that's, even though it's the local portion, it's still part of that $9,921 people. You won't see a large variance between the two, but just so you're aware of how the larger portions work out. Looking on the expenditure side, you can see we spend a majority of our money on instruction. That is the basic classroom, which is in the classroom. We spend a majority of our money in the classroom as we kind of philosophically plan every year. But whenever time we do adjustments, the classrooms are usually the last ones that we adjust to make sure that students have the resources they need in the classroom. The only thing you'll see slightly here also is the increase in transfers. And we'll get a little further on in discussion of why that is happening. This is just broken down, the same thing in the general fund, but broken down more by different categories. So you can see that on the bottom part of the expenditures, that you'll see that our salary projections were pretty on line with what it was. Roughly about 130 million of the 267, which is roughly almost 50%, is based on just salaries. The next three items, benefits, like a retirement, workers' comp, another 35% of our budget is based on the benefits. If you look at that total, where about 85% of our operating budget is spent on salaries. So again, that's our third component, so that's something we always have to be aware of. So when we look at significant changes, I remember, I recalled, I said that we adopted our budget before the state aid has passed. And unfortunately, last year, they kind of took a left turn on how they were funding it. There are promising money for us in our pupil foundational allowance. Our most likely scenario, we do three different scenarios as we go through the process, best case, worst case, and most likely. We adopt the most likely as we get forward to the end of the adoption process. We expected $241, so they gave us zero. So that was a significant change of roughly about a $4.7 million loss. They were going to take away some of the grants, enrollment stabilization was one of the grants, but they gave it back to us. MIPSers, which is our retirement fund, is where they really started messing with dollars. As you can see, some of those numbers are pretty big. So them messing with dollars could really impact us unexpectedly on an individual district than what they see at the state level. Fortunately for us, it worked out to our benefit. And taxes, if you remember, we had that issue where they didn't levy some of the taxes the prior year, so that's why it's higher in the subsequent year. So the net effect was roughly about a $6.4 million increase in revenue, which was good for us. Now, granted, some of the taxes were a one-time revenue, but for on a single-year basis, it was good. But on the next count, you see where student count, our other big piece we always talk about, is that we actually lost the total of 385 plus the 41, so roughly about 426 kids we lost revenue for because of a lower student count. That was about a $4.2 million loss. So netting those two, we are about roughly about $2 million higher overall from, on look on the general fund change. Looking at staff compensation, you can see, you know, budget actually was pretty good. Again, we control that one, so it's easier to forecast where we're at. Now, are we higher than staff because we lost those 421 kids? Yes. But we usually don't make those kind of adjustments in the same year because that means moving teachers out of their normal classroom, kids being reassigned. We don't usually do that. We roll that into next year's work, figure out how to balance that number if we're too high. Other expenses, only bigger things is contract services are up. You know, we have older buildings, we have to spend more money in our maintenance and operations. And we also have, we're doing those consultants this year for the communication of reaching out to the public on the potential bond. That's in that cost also. With that $2 million surplus, we're actually moving some of that money over to our building and site fund, again, to handle some of the repairs that we need to get done. So I know the committee's not going to be able to read this, but this just gives you a larger picture of looking at the original and the other amendment side for special revenue funds. Just be aware that you can see most of them are balanced. You know, for grant purposes, you know, we getting grants, we only expense what we have, so there really isn't a come and go. You'll see that the food service and adult ed are the only ones that really have a fund balance because they operate on year-to-year basis. They could have a loss or a gain in any given year. So that's why you see a little bit of fund balance, but most of the other funds, the student activity fund, funded projects, and ACT-18 are all self-balancing. We only get the costs that we can, that we spend, and we get reimbursed for those exact costs. You'll see in front of project, that little 3, it's on a screen later, but I'll kind of touch on it now. You'll see that we originally estimated 84 million, actually came in 104 million. Again, there are more grants that came up as the year progressed. We applied for them and received them, so a lot of those are grants that we applied for. One of them was the Volk Ed grant that we got for expanding Michael Berry for their construction trades and auto tech. You'll see another one that we received was for energy efficiency from the federal government. We applied for that Renewed America that we had to do. And you'll see some other ones that I'll mention later. Looking at the, this is just the general fund side by side. We kind of went over those numbers, but just to kind of give you a comparison if you want to get in further detail. You'll see here for the overall all funds, you'll see the debt fund that right now, we're at 1.35 mils. When we originally went back out in 2019 for the bond, we are 4.82. So that number has dropped as bonds have come off. And that 1.35 until 2034 will continue to go down slightly as we get near the 20-year mark for those original 2014 bonds. The other one is the capital projects. You'll see that there's roughly 8 million in that Esther funding. That's the federal portion. That finished up in September 30th is still in this fiscal year, and next year, you'll see that roll off. So just looking at this, I've already talked about the Esther's and debt funds. So some of the other was that 12A, that's the energy improvement bonds. 74B, infrastructure, we applied for a grant to help offset our electrical buses infrastructure. That was accepted. The 994, 995 is the vocational cap improvement in green schools. 31A, we got, they were originally going to cancel that one. At the last second, they came back and extended it for mental health. 31N was for mental health, HRA for mental health. So we are absolutely, you know, looking out there for any grants that we can get to help offset costs for the district. Stronger connection with mental health. And 21st Century, which you approved at the last board meeting, is tutoring. Normally, access has done that in the past, but the state has limited the number of buildings they can help. So they asked us to be a fiscal agent, so we're running the program, collecting indirect costs, but they're still running the program as a subcontractee. That was quick. So I'll open up.
Good.
Anytime you have questions, I met with Jamal earlier today. We went through, spent an hour just going through budget items. Always glad to do that. It is a broad, big area, and it's hard to be, you know, an expertise and everything, but you need to have that general understanding. I'm always glad to be with you and go over it.
Trustee Petruschka.
Okay, the elephant in the room. We hear a lot of instability right now coming from the federal.
Correct.
Side. And a lot of these grants, energy improvements, electric buses, capital improvements, I'm assuming are federal grants.
Correct.
Since we can't be reassured right now that we're actually going to get that money in the bank, I know my understanding from what I'm hearing and reading is, is that we're probably okay for right now for things that we've already.
Correct, for this year, we're good, yes.
We're good. How much of these projections can we withstand some seismic shifts coming from Washington DC and potentially from Lansing? Number one. And number two, and I'm going to kind of mix the question. My understanding when we lost the 400, so student count, that we eventually got back a number of those students, but we did not get the funds.
Correct.
Follow with them. I thought originally Lansing had changed that so that the money would move with them if they came in after.
So let me give you a little history on that.
So what's going on with that?
So we have firm, you know, dates that we collect student data and any given day. It's done across the whole state of Michigan, so they can know where every child is on a given day. If they were in another school district prior to us, so they came in after our count date, we get a proportional credit for that. And you'll see that as part of the student counts, you'll see 23A, those kids that transferred. They might have started in Crestwood, but then came to here and vice versa. They started here for our count date, and they went there afterwards. They've got a proportional amount up to the secondary count date. Those kids are accounted for. For those kids that were never in public schools this year, those are students that would not be in our count because they came in after the count date. The state was promising to do a supplemental for us for those districts that had that happen because they knew the refugees were coming in or coming from our state because of, you know, issues outside of their control. They just traveled later. That they were going to give us a supplemental, and that was on the agenda to be approved in December. But unfortunately, things kind of blew up and everything, nothing got passed. So the money, there is extra money in this school year. We don't know if they're going to still do a supplemental or not with the new legislature. They're still working through their kinks, and so we have not heard anything about those additional students. My understanding, whether about 385 kids that could be counted that we get a proportional foundational allowance for.
So I just, I wanted to make sure that our community members understand that while it sounds like we lost this amount of students, we really didn't lose them. It's just the accounting.
Right.
Side.
Financial support we get from the state does not allow us to count those kids for funding.
But we actually didn't lose that many of students at the end of the day. Okay, so that I wanted to clear up. And then we're back to a lot, a lot of this uncertainty right now in our political landscape with a lot of our funding. Are we prepared to weather the storm, so to speak?
Well, that's one of the things that we're going to have to make some assumptions. Because right now, any grant that's coming forward, we were going to talk about American schools in the finance committee, about whether we could apply for it again, because there's a 25% match. And unfortunately, we don't have necessarily the operational money to match that, that we were considering going into our fund balance to match that, to do some school improvements. So basically getting four to $1 on money. They end up pulling that off just today. They pulled that off the shelf and it closed that window because that was due in April. Now it's not even open. So we don't even know if it's going to reopen again. The other things we're seeing now is language being associated with federal grants. That if you're going to apply for a federal grant, you've heard some of the White House executive offices, you can't offer a DIA program.
Right.
And if you're doing it, you're not eligible for the grant. And they said they are going to audit districts or any grantees to see if they're actually are or not doing that. So now it comes into question whether we can even apply for federal grants. So as you're also aware, you know, the states are filing lawsuits, one after the other, opposing some of these, you know, White House mandates that are coming through. So where it's all going to end, I'm not sure. But what we're going to do is look at all our grants, especially the federal ones, and see if we don't get that, what the impact is. Now, that impact will affect next school year.
Right.
So as we go forward, we'll have to make the assumption that we are not going to get that and have to figure out how to handle that, because some grants do have staff in it. And we don't want to lay off staff, so that means they have to roll into our current staffing. And maybe we look at those that are retiring. We don't hire new people, we roll those people in. So it's going to affect a lot of different departments. HR might not be able to hire things, like we like to hire early, get the cream of the crop from the graduating classes. We might have to not look at that this year. So those are the things we're going to have to decide as administration and board, where we're going to go with that and how it's going to impact next year's budget. This year, we're fine, but it's next year is going to be the issue.
All right.
Trustee Watts.
So two things, what is the current fund balance percentage?
11%?
You mean the rainy day, what's?
Yeah, we have a certain percentage that we would like to.
So when you look at the general fund, it's the 37 million, 639 is our fund balance on the, whoops, sorry, wrong side. 30 million is our fund balance on the amended side out of a 283 million. So you're probably just under 10%.
And what does the state like us to have? What is best practice?
If we're under 5%, if we're under 5%, we're going concerned. And then we have to start filing reports with the state of Michigan to show how we're going to get out of that.
Okay, so we're.
The recommendation is usually anywhere between 5 and 20%.
Okay, I was going to say, we liked it around 15.
Our own board policy says 5 to 20. Anytime we're over 20, we're expected to work as a group to figure out how to get it back under 20.
Okay, so we're at 10%. And I think you had already mentioned this, and I know this is what I'm doing. My position is looking at the language for those grants to start looking through the application to see what sort of verbiage.
Right.
They're hunting for.
Yes.
Okay.
Matter of fact, if we have to, I just talked to Joanne Denae, put some language on the cabinet to start talking about, do we even qualify or not qualify? You know, I don't necessarily know every single program we do, so that's something we're going to work as a group effort to see if we are. And if we want to be, what's the compliance we would have to take?
I was going to say, are we going to have our legal maybe start to have to weigh in on some of this? If they're more up to speed about what's going on?
It's something we're going to have to consider.
Going to have to consider, yeah.
Correct.
Trustee Barry.
Yeah, let's clarify the student count, Tom, Mr. Wall. The students that we lost, they're not the same students that came into our school.
Correct. Correct, because we were based on students that were here for the February count of last year is what we do as a projection.
Correct. But I mean, I heard earlier, it was a good question that was asked. It's, we're not losing, we didn't lose any students.
We lost the students we had last year, but more just new students came in.
Because of what's going on on the other side of the ocean is, you know. Like if we didn't lose the students that we did lose, we would be up 400 students.
Yeah, I don't know if we're actually, they could have been a student that just came in late.
Just guesstimate, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
And Fatima Faraj and Rosa DeBilye were tracking every student. We do have some, for example, that they didn't come back. They were in our district last year, but they didn't come back at the start of the year. Normally, the pattern.
That's not the 400 students.
No, not all of them, every.
Not that many, not that many families went overseas during all this trouble going on.
What we looked at, though, with the data, and again, every situation is different. But they would count for one of two reasons. If they weren't enrolled, and this is what the supplemental was going to be, and then it blew up during the lame duck, was that if they weren't already enrolled in another district or if they were enrolled in our district and just didn't reach, didn't come into class before the October 10th, they would have counted. But you are right, there were different reasons. We've looked at previous years, and this was an odd year. It was not within the norm because we generally would get 70 to 80 students that would come within that timeframe. And this year, it was about 380. So it was an odd phenomenon. Again, we can't say for sure on each individual, but it was data showing that it wasn't within our norm.
I just want to make sure that the discussion that we've had before, that we're bleeding students.
Oh, with the.
That still exists.
Yeah, sure.
We need to keep an eye on that. We can't just say, oh, student count was low, but no, it's okay, because it's different students.
Yeah. We're losing students at the high school. We look good at the elementary levels, but the high school is, and we've had some that are going online in other places.
Those virtual schools.
So you're right.
We don't want to say to the community that, oh, yeah, no, no, we're good. No, we're not good. We need to have that discussion.
Sure, absolutely. But this was just a unique phenomenon that we were trying to work with the legislature to get the funding for our students.
Sure, and the problem, most likely, we're not going to get these funds.
We're still going to advocate.
We're going to advocate, but the reason we're not going to get these funds, we're probably one of the very rare districts that this happened to.
Well, we do have support from some of the educational organizations for this, so I'm hoping that we can use those.
I mean, I don't want to sound negative, but if this was a statewide issue.
You'd have more.
We'd have more power.
Sure, sure.
Yeah.
I mean, the fact that we got guesstimating about 400 students because of what was going on overseas, maybe a local, another district got 40, maybe a district out in Oakland County got a couple hundred. We're the minority in that discussion. That's why.
Sure.
Right. It's only 2% of our student count, but still, it's a large number.
It's a large amount.
Yes.
Large amount.
Any other questions for Mr. Wall?
And I always, again, anytime I want to get further into a certain section, I'm more than willing to do.
Thank you for what you do, and congratulations again.
Congratulations again.
Yeah, you got a fun job.
It's not an easy job.
Next item, please.
Okay, next item will be acknowledgement of correspondence.
Now, we did receive a letter today that I believe you all have from Mr. Duggan.
Right?
Yes, Dennis Duggan. All of the emails that we received about personnel have been responded to accordingly with Dr. Milaico. So thanks to all the parents and citizens who have corresponded with us. Next item.
Next item is board member committee and organization reports.
The finance committee, me, I was sitting in for Treasurer Diambrosio. And the items that were discussed were the amendment to the budget as well as the explanation of the budget that Mr. Wall just did. He did also mention the Renew America Competitive Grant, which is needing a 25% matching fund and possible usage of the fund balance for that. That's to be looked out. There was also the banking services. There will be an RFP for that service so we can get a better, better rate from the banks. Believe that was, any other item, trustee?
We did add legal services on the agenda, but we didn't get, we didn't have enough time to get to that today.
Okay.
We are looking for information on that.
Yeah, thank you. Any other committee reports? Trustee Barry?
The policy committee also met earlier. I sent out an email earlier today asking my colleagues that if there's a certain policy you want us to get to this year, please share it with Mr. Musson and myself. Also, I circ, we had Joanne circulate the minutes of the study session from February 28, 2023. We kind of all get on the same page on some of those policies that were discussed. Some we got updated on, some we're still looking for information, but we will get to it. Some of the items on the agenda was a board meeting agenda regarding citizen participation.
Yes.
Mr. President. The discussion we had is we're going to keep it the same. We'll give you flexibility, give the president flexibility to move things around.
Okay.
If there's, what this is, what we're talking about here, if we get a roomful of constituents or students, the president will have the right to move citizen participation of the agenda.
Okay.
Just, just so that we're following Robert's rules, he really needs to.
Entertain a motion.
Entertain a motion.
Sure, 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 sure. But we're saying.
That's always been his prerogative.
Sure, sure.
Or the president's prerogative.
The other thing we discussed is the cell phone search protocol. And all that was, was just kind of updating and educating our staff on the protocol. And at the same time, moving forward, we're going to try to figure out, we're going to follow up on how do we educate our students on their rights when it comes to search protocol. Placement of administration was also discussed, administrators. All that was, we're just updating the policy to kind of like mirror state law. Was there anything else? Okay, thank you. That's all I had, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Any other committee reports? Seeing none, we can go to the next item, please.
The next item is board member and superintendent commentary.
I do have some commentary, but I'll wait for anybody to say any commentary. Trustee Zaha.
I just want to, I'm sure a lot of you know Mr. Beduun, who works at Edsel Ford. He's a counselor, a great person, a good friend. And I just want to send our prayer to him. He's, he had a heart attack, and our heart goes to him and his family. We wish him the best of health, and it's really, I mean, he's the kind of person that always gave, a genuine person, a person that cared about our kids and impacted, impacted the community in so many ways. So we want to wish him the best of health. And, you know, we wish him to be back at Edsel Ford and continue what he's doing.
Absolutely. All prayers to Mr. Beduun and his family. Trustee Zaha?
Yeah, I would like to bring up something to the superintendent that we talked about briefly before, but it also brought up at our college meeting last month. And, and that is how we classify and count our students and how we look at categories, especially racial and ethnic categories. I know that we have a software system, I believe, called MyStar in the schools that keeps the profile of the students. And one of the things that it tracks is race or ethnicity. And for the longest time, Arab-Americans were absent or invisible from these things, counted as white under federal law. That seems like it's being rectified by the federal government as of March of last year. But still, for, you know, educational institutions from, direction from the Department of Education, have been able to add more categories to these things if they wanted to. So what I'm asking is that if we can get a clear answer of what are the categories that are currently depicted on the MyStar system and how they're currently classifying students, and to update it to reflect our population. So if there is not a box for Arab-American or the government uses. So if there is not a box for Arab-American, or the government uses Middle East, North African, which I don't like, but whatever, that's what they use. If, if, if there's not a box for that, that we ask the software company to add a box for that, and to add sort of specification boxes beyond that. We have a unique population, and we can, we should get the proper data so we know exactly how to address all different concerns in our district. So that would mean if we do have a box for, let's say, Middle East, North African, or really any other thing, that people can specify beyond that, let's say what country they're from or whatever. And very importantly, that they can check more than one box. You know, we are increasingly diverse and, you know, quote unquote, mixed, you know, we have a lot of mixed families and all that kind of stuff. So it's important that also students can classify for themselves or their parents do it more than one category if necessary. I know sometimes, you know, I teach this class and, or teach this stuff at school, and people get confused sometimes where, you know, how can you have four people in the room and have, you know, three of them be white and three of them be Arab? Well, and there's only four people. Well, you know, somebody married somebody, so you have somebody that is a, a member of more than one racial, someone can check more than one box. So we need to have those things available so we can have an accurate depiction so that we know right away when we're speaking and when we're talking about our district, exactly how many, you know, especially in a place like Dearborn, you know, what's the percentage of Arab-American students? Right now, I think we have no idea. And it's important that we have that kind of accurate information. So I'm just asking you, I know we've discussed it before, but I'm just asking you to look into that so we can get clear answers, so we know exactly how to, what to ask for from the software companies. And hopefully, to start a process where maybe in a year from now, after we've gotten the right classifications and gotten people to fill them out, that we do have accurate numbers of, of all of our students. Thanks.
Any other commentary? I've also sent the entire board the link to a form where you can input the board goals for 2025, 2026. So please look for that. And I'd like it to be shown in the March meeting here as a presentation item that we can track for the next, for this year and the year after. Thank you, Trustee Ajami, for mentioning Mr. Bedun, he was also on my agenda. I know Founder's Day for the PTA is happening on the 27th. I know Mr. Nabila Talaya, the President of PTA is here. I hope that some of us can make it. I know I plan to be there. And I wanted to mention about news about ice raids in certain places in our community. And I've talked to Dr. Maleko about this and some of you as far as what we're doing as the district. And the district does have a plan of addressing these kind of situations if, if they were to be happening at our schools.
Sorry, you said ice raids?
Yes, yeah. So Dr. Maleko has a plan, has addressed it with his administration, addressed it also with the teachers and secretaries if this issue were to happen. And then I don't have anything else, so next item.
Next item is Request for Information and/or Future Agenda Items. Oh, I guess that's when I should have said what I just said to you, but, okay, sorry.
Thank you for.
You're new here.
Sorry, I'm very new here, yes, thank.
We already have that request. Any other requests? Trustee Barry?
Just for the record, my opinion, you're doing a good job. Don't go anywhere.
Thank you, Sayen, thank you.
So.
Good, nice to hear that from everybody.
I would like to get a history of, I'm going to go ahead and call it, we called it earlier, the Joel Guido Fund Balance, Dr. Maleko?
Oh.
Just to kind of follow up on Trustee Watts' question, see where we've been and what direction we're going. Just going to keep an eye on that, please.
Maybe over the last 10 years or longer, do you want to see?
Let's see, we started, yeah, 15 years.
15?
Yeah.
Thank you.
We've seen it not too long ago.
Sure, we'll have it.
Just needs updating, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other requests? Trustee Ajami?
One other thing that I'm looking for, and we shall be looking for, is to kind of get a better handle or understanding of our EL students. I met with Dr. Patterson and did an amazing job, gave me up to speed. But one other thing that I was hoping that, from a data perspective, we could get some data analysis based on number of kids designated as EL students in the district per school, and the number of years those kids are in the program. Because there are some kids that are staying six, seven years, whatever. I know the data is there because he showed it to me, but he can provide it to me. It's just, you know, probably doing some kind of pivot table or something to that extent. And also the number of kids that have exited the program. Because right now, from what I'm being told is, if you look at the high school level, the number of, the exit is very small. Where they exit is more at the elementary school. And this will give us a good gauge, you know, as far as our proficiencies. Where is it impacted by? Is it the EL students and so on? And just to make a statement, the, the number of yours will dictate a lot of things. Because I do think if you take kids that are, just my personal opinion, that are not in a second language speakers, and they take the WITA test, they might struggle with that. But it gives us an idea as far as, you know, how many kids do we have in the program? How many are exiting? And how long have they been there?
Great, got that, Dr. Maleko?
I got it.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you. All right, there are no more requests.